I can't because I've forgotten. Very good. Okay, if everybody's ready, call this meeting to order with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Don't see Mr. Girard here. So we will move on to roll call.
Mayor Williams?
Here.
Counselor Burke?
Here.
Counselor Berger?
Here.
Counselor Ian Smith?
Oh. Um.
Counselor Kristen Smith?
Here.
Counselor Taylor?
Here.
Counselors Zimmerman?
Here.
Roll call is complete, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Welcome everyone here tonight. I don't actually have any announcements. Does anyone else have any announcements? Then I would move on to approval of the minutes from regular council meeting sixteen sixty-eight, January sixth.
Make a motion, we approve a regular council meeting minutes sixteen sixty-four, or excuse me, sixteen sixty-eight.
Second.
Okay. Anyone had any comments or corrections? Council have any comments or corrections? To open it up to public comments, the public comments on regular council meeting sixteen sixty-eight. Mr. Orr.
Yeah, I'm D.C. Orr, eleven seventeen Nevada Avenue. Madam Mayor and Council, I have some comments on the approval of these minutes. Since September twenty twenty-four, I protested approval of minutes when the action violated constitutional transparency provisions of right to know and right to participate. Council held up approval of meetings number sixteen sixty-four, sixteen sixty-six, and sixteen seventy-seven to investigate whether they were violating constitutional rights. You were. On January sixth, Mayor Williams gave an executive directive to split those into three separate approvals so as not to violate constitutional rights of participation. Council President Zimmerman violated the executive directive with a motion to lump them all together. Councilman Taylor questioned the mayor, and she rescinded her directive or she never meant it in the first place. Councilman Taylor and Councilman Ian Smith voted no on approval. The members with military and law enforcement background refused to join you in your criminal actions. See, I want the public record to show that those minutes contained a bald-faced lie which violates MCA forty-five-seven-two-oh-eight, which is called tampering with the public record. You know, your meetings are video recorded, and they're available on the web. And so, the minutes of December two at number sixteen sixty-six, after the chief had a constitutional violating presentation, there's a statement that says council majority did not mind revisiting the distracted driving ordinance. That's a lie. There is no way to have a council majority opinion when you are violating constitutional rights of public participation. What you guys did was illegal. MCA forty-five-seven-two-oh-eight is a criminal act. The legislature took it so seriously that they allow for ten years in jail for a fifty-thousand-dollar fine. Four of you voted to approve public records that were not true. You meant to deceive the public, you did.
Any other public comments on council minutes sixteen sixty-eight? Any other public comments on sixteen sixty-eight? Okay, no public comments. All in favor of the motion to approve the minutes for sixteen sixty-eight?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Ian?
Nay.
Okay. So five to one vote, motion carries, the motions, the minutes are approved. Brings us to the city administrators' report.
Yes, Madam Mayor and Council, good evening. The local emergency planning committee made up of members from the police, fire, medical, ambulance, local government, National Weather Service. We had a quarterly meeting last Monday. It was reported that the iPOS, which is an interactive public warning system, is now ready for use within Lincoln County, once the sheriff's office dispatchers get all trained up on how to do it. So what the iPOS is, is basically when you see the scrolling across the top of your TV, that's the iPOS system. And it's also be used like an Amber Alert, where they can set up a geo grid and all cell phones within that grid go off with those alerts. You don't have to sign up for everything, the cell phones will just go off. And this isn't like the code red where you can sign up to get alerts from the county. They also talked about getting additional training for first responders such as a mass casualty event, a mass shooter, what happens if there's a train derailment and hazardous materials are spilled. So they're looking at setting up a mock emergency operations center. They're going to do a lot of focus on hospitals, schools, and soft targets coming up into the future. Then generators were discussed for warming areas and for emergency shelters around the county, where they can use some more, so they're trying to get grant funding for those. It is a requirement by the state and the federal's government that we have these quarterly meetings in order to stay current for FEMA grant funding. I went down yesterday and was providing testimony to the MSEP Long Range Planning Committee in Helena for our lift station grant. So Libby is ranked literally dead last in those meetings. The top eight are guaranteed to be funded, but the funding that they have, but nine through thirty-three, it's going to be up to a different House bill to see if we can get all that funding. People say it's crazy, why should we have to drive down to Helena? Well, there's a new committee chair and there's new committee members. The idea now by this committee is that if cities aren't willing to have some skin in the game and come down there and testify and answer questions, their ranking should be dropped. The good thing is, even though we're ranked dead last, at least we're ranked, there's a lot of communities that didn't even get their rankings this year. So that's why I went down there. I'm heading down to Helena again tomorrow to go for the RRG grant, World Grants and Loans, to the Long Range Committee, but there's a few different members. And they did put out an email that even if you provide a testimony previously to a different committee, they still expect the cities to show up and provide this testimony. I think it went rather well. I did have to change a little bit, kind of the tactic, because the committee members were shown that they were just tired of hearing numbers and how many percentage of poverty and how many people are affected. So I really went towards the overall goal of what we're trying to do for Libby, and it was well received down there. I actually got a few laughs coming out of there, one kind of tapped me on the shoulder because I said there's three rules, be blunt, open, and honest, and that's why I'm going to be with this committee. The chair of the committee actually dropped his pen and sat back, so I think we had a really good response out of that. Right now, we're still working on other issues, like Greece being introduced in the sewer plant, open cut mining permits, and then work on Slip and Screw Street. Just to let the council know, while I was waiting there for four hours to get this testimony going around, I was talking to all the engineers in the cities and the mayors and the managers. We're not the only ones across the state that are hurting like this. So I would actually put us up, since Mayor Williams has been in here with the creation of the capital improvement plan. Everybody was talking about rate adjustments and where we fall in with the target base rate. I think Libby's on a really good track right now. And that's my report from Madam Mayor and Council.
Thank you. Skip down to light streets and sidewalks?
Yes, I did finally get a quote from Twisted Turtle back on some of the flags. All it was, was just the flags themselves, nothing else in the kits. I do have kits that we can buy from a different company, but I am also going to look into Flash Fifty-Six as well and see if they can give a bit on this, just to see if we...I'd rather keep everything local if we could, but right now, the way the costs are, it's just quite substantially more. But I think it involves, because of our, having our City of Libby logo and stuff on it, but I need to get with them. I just have not had the time in the last few weeks, so we'll get with that and have another committee meeting on that and try and get that moved forward.
Thank you. Local government study, finance is on the agenda with the budget, so we'll move to the Local Government Study Commission.
Madam Mayor and Council, I'm D.C. Orr, eleven seventeen Nevada Avenue. I am the temporary chair of the Local Government Study Commission. I'll give you a little history lesson in where this came from. In eighteen eighty-nine, Constitution was, which established Montana as the forty-first state, set out the three branches of government, executive, legislative, and judicial, and not much else. It was rude and crude, and they called it a frontier constitution. It lacked requirements for transparency, and because of that, corruption flourished in the smoke-filled back rooms over the next eighty-two years. Then in nineteen seventy-one, Anaconda's largest mine was taken over by the country of Chile, and the federal government had proposed the, what they called the North Central Power Study. North Central Power Study was an attempt to set up a coal-fired power plant that would have devastated a large area of Montana. Both of these things, Chile buying the mine and the North Central Power Study, were seen as threats to Montana's sovereignty and prosperity. Also in ninety-one, or seventy-one, the electorate chose one hundred ordinary citizens from around the state, a true melting pot of diversity, to update that crude frontier-style Constitution to better reflect the needs of a more modern, refined society. Transparency and local government powers were two big issues. In nineteen seventy-two, Montana voters initiated a constitutional convention tasked to draft a new constitution to meet these challenges and address the corruption that had become the stuff of legends. Terms like public trust, public duty, public records became law. The rule of law, the notion that no one is above the law, finally came to the frontier. Because of the problems corrupt civic leaders had caused, those one hundred people drew up Article Eleven, titled Local Governments, for this new Constitution. And it was pure genius. It caters to we, the people, it gives the power to the people, which is the way this country was designed. Understanding local citizens are better equipped to address local issues, this article in the Montana Constitution added local government powers to protect small towns in a big state and equalize concentrations of power. Frustrated by the creep of corruption inherent in government secrecy, they had experienced these geniuses added provision to examine and evaluate the efficacy of government every ten years and offered opportunity for a voter-mandated Local Government Study Commission. To do that work and report to the electorate what problems it finds, alternative structures of government that might be available, and weigh any proposed changes to local government that ultimately are delivered to the electorate for adoption. Tonight I have the honor of introducing the Lincoln County, or the Libby Study Commission. There is also a Lincoln County, and I believe Eureka and Troy have them, if I'm not wrong. We were impaneled by the will of the voters, were empowered to examine the form and function of Libby city government in relation to the American ideals of freedom, liberty, and justice for all. Tonight I think you're going to maybe appoint our third member. We had three members to begin with. Vince Backen is the co-chair, temporary co-chair. Vince, I would call our historian. Vince has gone through all the history of the city government studies. He can tell you what Edith Kerr said about stop signs on Mineral Avenue. He can tell you what Dan Larson had to say, or Earl Lovick, these are some of the people who have ran this before. Recognize that Dan Larson was a big shot with the lumber company, and Earl Lovick was a big shot with W.R. Grace. Those are the kind of people who set up the former government you now operate under. Karen Dinkins is, has been assigned temporary secretary. Karen is our organizer, she's saved our bacon, keeping us on the straight and narrow more than once. She has had some changes in her life where she may leave the city, and she thought it was best if she got out of the way so you could point someone at an early stage in this process. But she has graciously offered to stay with us and keep us on the tight and narrow. And so, who's that? Where was? Oh, John Beebe. You're going to maybe appoint somebody tonight, and I hope John Beebe's the guy. John is a fellow who is a detail man, is what I would call him. He was a bridge inspector by trade, and that gave him a capacity to understand very intricate issues, very complex issues, very strategic issues. He stands up here and talks on a regular basis, and you guys know what he has to say. And of course, that's pretty much what we have to work with at this point in the coming of months. We will be trying to get the public involved in this, interested in it. We need public energy for this because it is a public mandated position. Whatever we come up with will have to meet the approval of the public by vote. But we will also be writing regular reports. Matter of fact, Edith Kerr wrote what they called a minority report that kept the city of Libby from consolidating with county at one point. They also talked about, and ultimately we did, let the police force go to the county. We reinstituted that, I believe, in the nineties. Clay Coker, I think, was the first chief. I may write a minority report about your guys' manipulation of the public record, see what the public says about that. So you're going to be working with this for something over a year now, and I hope you enjoy it as much as I do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll move on to the City-County Board of Health.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The City-County Board of Health met, uh, twelve?
I think it's the fourteen.
Sorry, the fourteen. Thanks. And we had several updates from the programs in the health department. The zero-to-five program, which I don't know if folks are familiar with, they have a little van, they go all around the county, and always parked on the farmer's market. The coordinator for that is leaving, so they're transitioning to a new person. They've also, we also had a public health update, and I think everybody saw the request for survey for smoke-free parks. So if you're not familiar with that, there's a survey going around sponsored by the health department to get people's input on if they want their parks to be smoke-free. We had some other updates from all the other programs. The one we spent the most amount of time on was news to me and surprising, which is the community's crisis response team, which is folks who assist law enforcement and emergency services personnel with largely mental health issues, has been, it was abruptly stopped. And so, it was very surprising, and there wasn't a great deal of explanation of why it was stopped, but there's movement to try and, because the county received a grant to fund this project, and so the grant is the house administered somewhere. And so that, where that goes next is being discussed, and I think it will likely go to the health department, which is not where it originated, but seems like that's where it will be. We spent the most amount of time talking about that. We also took action on our communicable, communicable disease response plan for the health board, and so we approved that as well. Expansion of the landfill is imminent and is going to be costly, but I think they've been talking about that for a number of years. It's planning, it's happening. So that concludes my report.
Okay. Moving on to public comments on non-agenda items. If you would like to speak on items that are not on the agenda, that are within the jurisdiction of the city council, then step to the microphone, state your name and address, and you would have three minutes. Okay? Are there any public comments on items not on the agenda?
John Beebe, seven oh four East Ninth. I just wanted to point out and get your attention towards a couple of things in the news that may be relevant. The first thing is, the U.S. Forest Service opened up a comment period regarding MMC, which is Mont-Nord, HEPLA doing exploratory stuff out here, twenty miles out here in the cabinets. The development, the responsible development of our environmental resources would be helpful to our city to grow and develop, creating a tax base as well as service industry to support them. The comment period is open, you know, so as far as representation that I would want from my local government representatives would be to support that, I mean, responsible environmental development of our resources is, you know, critical to growth and sustainability for our community. I would implore all of you to support that. At least look into it. The other one was Fish Wildlife and Parks has grant money available for shooting range equipment. I know our police force uses the shooting range out there, but if I go out there, I have no steel targets, I have no target silhouette holders, I have, you know, in bay, the rifle bay can use some targets and stuff, and it's available to local community governments to apply for. Recreation is important to us, as we all know, through the new skate park and stuff. I appreciate you guys supporting that. But I would like to point your way to this grant that's available to local city governments for gun range development, and work with the gun range, that's kind of representation. I feel that my local government should, you know, I would support that. I'd like to go out there and shoot, it's a good thing, and it would even be helpful for our local law enforcement. So I would implore you to look into that grant. I'd apply for it myself, but I'm not a government agency, so thank you, that's all I had.
Thank you. Any other public comments on items not on the agenda? Any other comments on items not on the agenda? Public comments on items not on the agenda. Okay, and we move on to the agenda items, the first of which is requests from Fish Wildlife and Parks that we enter it on our agenda and make it enter into our minutes, that we are being, that the city is creating a list of those residents who are willing to accept wild turkeys harvested within the city limits under the city's harvest permit. Mr. Taylor, you were the liaison with the Fish Wildlife?
Correct.
Do you have anything to enlarge, additional information?
Yeah, the city of Libby received a permit to harvest some turkeys. There's been some difficulties in doing that because churches can no longer take them from what we're told because they're not FDA certified. Food Bank will only take them if they're ground up and processed, they don't have any way of processing them. So what we're trying to do, I've got with the new biologist, and he's agreed to let us create a list where we could donate these turkeys and say, Sally and the public would like to have a turkey, similar to what they do with the CWD here, that the turkeys could be harvested and donated to the public, but they wanted a list that was formed, the whole public was informed, so they could get a chance to be put on the list, instead of just creating AI call, I'd like a turkey. So that's the purpose of bringing this on the agenda, is to have a public forum, to please call City Hall, and get your name put on the list, and if you harvest turkeys, we'll try to get that distributed.
Council have any comments or questions? Does the public have any comments regarding this item?
Karen Dinkins, twelve ten Dakota Avenue. The only thing I would have is a question, and it's that only people in the city can get on the list for turkeys harvested in the city, or can anybody in the county or anybody? So I would just make sure that it's clear that anybody could if they wanted. Thank you.
Any other public comments on this agenda item? Any other public comments? Then we'll move on to Resolution Twenty Fifty-One, authorizing deer harvest on city-owned property for the purpose of testing for CWD. We did pass this resolution a couple of years ago. It had on its, and so we are needing to renew it. So it's a resolution of the City of Libby and Municipal Corporation of Montana authorizing Libby City Police Department, Lincoln County Sheriff's Office, and Montana Fish Wildlife and Parks personnel to harvest and collect for sampling deer from public property for the purposes of testing for chronic wasting disease. Whereas in May twenty nineteen, samples from a whitetail deer removed from the inside of the city of Libby tested positive for chronic wasting disease, and whereas CWD is a progressive fatal disease affecting the nervous system of deer, elk, and moose, which is, if left unmanaged, can cause significant population declines in the decades to come. And whereas the city of Libby is now within Montana Fish Wildlife and Parks CWD management area, and that entity has deemed it necessary to establish the prevalence of CWD in the deer population resident inside the city of Libby, and the only means by which to do so is to harvest and collect for sampling some of the deer, and whereas Fish Wildlife and Parks has deemed it useful to its management efforts to harvest resident urban deer from city parks and other city-owned property, now therefore, may it resolve, the City Council of Libby authorizes City of Libby Police Department, Lincoln County Sheriff's Office, and Montana Fish Wildlife and Parks personnel, as authorized by those and Montana Fish Wildlife and Parks personnel, as authorized by those entities as well, to harvest deer on city-owned property for the purpose of testing for CWD. Persons exercising this authority must use caution to prevent injury to persons and property. The authority granted under this resolution shall continue until rescinded.
Make a motion, we approve Resolution Number 2051.
Second.
Okay. Any counsel comments regarding this resolution?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
So once again, I was liaison with the Fish Wildlife and Parks on this. I spoke with our new biologist, real nice guys, willing to work with us. Part of the problem that I've seen in the past few years with our CWD harvest deer, the majority of those deer have come from outside the city limits. So speaking with the new biologist, we're trying to focus more on getting more resident deer inside the city limits. And that's part of the move, is to use some of the other city properties we haven't currently used to trap deer. Along with that, like we mentioned at the last council meeting, any public that would like to have deer trapped on their property, please reach out, give us your name and number.
Okay. Do counsel have any questions? Any concerns over this resolution? Okay, I would open it up to public comment. Anyone, public comment on Resolution 2051, authorizing deer harvest on city-owned property? Any public comment? Any public comment? Then all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Pounce? I'm sorry, Ian?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. I'll move on to the lower grant, $6,448, to build and maintain a radio tower at the water treatment plant. That is coming out of our Streets Department. Mr. Williams, did you have any questions or comments that you wanted to make regarding this request?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Counsel. So it's been an ongoing process of getting some great radio service within our city for our employees. We started out with reaching out to Laura last year. They gave us a grant for upgrading our radios. And we figured that was going to clean it up. Been working with Dr. Derek Brayland. He has donated a tremendous amount of this time. We've recently received some equipment and a very large sum of monies was needed to complete this due to the topography of the valley we live in. Our, the new radios that were purchased last year, they're not, we're not doing any better than the radios that the older handhelds that we have. Those are all still in use. This year, we've got a repeater mounted on the existing tower by the water plant. There's numerous parts, pieces, cables, et cetera, to put this all together. I reached out, said to the town president, Laura, and inquired about it. She put it all together, submitted it, and they came back with, moved forward on that. And Derek Brayland finished today programming, reprogramming all the radios. We have exceptional, exceptional radio communication out south of town, out to the 50-mile marker, 10 miles of Highway 37. So I'm very ecstatic about that. We're back to having some great radio communication abilities like we had years ago. Just going to give you a little synopsis of how this has progressed from the start to where we're at now. So I appreciate everything Laura's done for us with these, with this grant and our grant prior to this. Move forward. I thought we have some questions on any of that.
Thank you. Make a motion, we approve the $6,448 lower grant to build and maintain a radium tower at the wastewater treatment plant.
Second.
Okay. Since there was no counsel comments, I will, oh. Sorry, Tabitha.
No, that's okay. Tabitha, very good. 225 Commerce Way. Madam Mayor and counsel members, I just wanted to kind of give you the synopsis. We did approve grant funding on January 6th, not in time to make the last meeting. That is why we're visiting on this meeting. The acceptance of the grant tonight would be the start term date. And the end, according to Justin's plans, would be May 1st, 2025, pending all, the completion of all expenditures at that time. If the word is not accepted today, then the commencement would be considered null and void. But at this time, we have an intent to fund for, again, the $6,448 in approval of lower funding.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So any public comment on this grant, lower grant for our radios? Any public comment, comment? Any public comment on this agenda item? Then all in favor of the motion to approve the lower grant for $6,448?
Aye.
Pounce? A motion carries. The grant is approved. And moves on to the next lower grant, $28,160 for the construction of the skateboard feature at Fireman's Park.
Again, so again, the synopsis of this grant funds would be available today as it is approved. This grant was originally requested by a Libby community member and then moved into the Parks Committee once that project was brought to the city. It would start tonight on the acceptance of the grant funds and would end August 1st, 2025, pending completion of expenditures. So if not accepted tonight, it would be considered null and void. It is, again, the total of $28,160 in building the skate park feature.
Thank you.
Thanks. Make a motion, we approve the $28,160 lower grant for the addition of skate park feature in Fireman's Park.
I'll second.
Okay. Does counsel have any comments regarding this grant? Are there any public comments regarding this grant? Any public comments regarding the lower grant for construction of the skateboard element? Public comments? Then all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Motion carries, that grant is also approved. Thank you. Thank you very much for helping us with those projects. Brings us to, I put it on, this appointment of Christian Montgomery for the three-year term on the Planning Zoning Board. It should have actually been reappointment. Mr. Montgomery is on the planning board. He was on a number of years ago. He came on last year to fill a vacancy. We did advertise this position, and there were no applicants. So I'm recommending that Mr. Montgomery be reappointed, this time for a three-year term.
I'll make the motion that we reappoint Christian Montgomery to the Planning Zoning Commission.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Any comments or questions regarding the appointment? Any public comment regarding the appointment of Mr. Montgomery to the Planning Zoning Commission? Mr. Orr?
Madam Mayor and Counsel, DC Orr 1117 Nevada Avenue. It was a very startling revelation a few months ago when we found out that the Planning Zoning Board had not taken minutes, which, again, are required by law. One of the other things that I see going on there is, they have the same people they started out with, what, six years ago? Because they don't rotate people out of there, because they don't go out in the community and really ask for people who might be interested, because they're very comfortable with the people there that don't care if we keep minutes, don't care if we do everything according to the law. Then they don't go out and look for some new blood to maybe bring some innovation in there. You've got some serious problems in this, in this board. There is seemingly no oversight over it, or it wouldn't have gone so long without minutes that are required by law. Did I mention that part? And so I kind of want to, because I've been standing here for 26 years, I kind of want to take some oversight of that committee under my own wings. Madam Mayor, what I'm requesting is, I'm requesting a report on what they're doing to correct the fact that they don't take minutes. And I kind of want to know what other committees you have that have taken minutes or haven't taken minutes. And I think that's something that is required by law, so we probably ought to look into that also. Madam Mayor, do you have an agreement that you will let me view how they are correcting that issue with the minutes? Am I going to answer?
Yep.
Yep. Yeah. Why would you hide from something when you have a committee under your administration that is violating the law?
Question on the floor is the appointment.
Yes.
You have raised a separate question, and if that's all you want to talk about, then I'm going to call a point of order and move on to the motion.
An appointment to a committee that is operating outside of the law, Madam Mayor. Don't forget that part.
Any other public comments on the appointment of Christian Montgomery to the Planning Zoning Board? Any other public comment? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ian?
Aye, I'm in favor of it.
Okay, thank you. Moves on to the appointment of John Beebe to the Government Study Commission. Counsel members received a copy of his application and resume.
I'll make a motion that we appoint John Beebe to the Local Study, Government Study Commission. Second.
Okay. Any questions regarding this application? Okay, comments? I'll open the floor for comments on this application for this, for the appointment to the Government Study Commission. Any public comments? Public comments on this application, appointment? Then all in favor of appointing John Beebe to the Government Study Commission?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. John will do that swearing-in after the meeting is adjourned. Okay. Moves on to, we've had a request for use at Riverfront Park. And we opened that discussion at last meeting. I'm continuing that discussion because I know that some people have some questions and comments they would like to make regarding that request. One of the, I'll just open it to the counsel for comments because I know that a couple of you have, and this is continued discussion. This is not a decision for tonight.
Madam Mayor, I guess I'll start. I don't support this. I don't feel that the financial opportunity that was given is equitable for what is there. I don't think that the city should be in direct competition with landlords inside the city limits. Mr. Blackburn's comments were, he had a fly shop till it became too expensive, so he chose not to have one anymore. But now we're going to pick our citizens that pay us taxes and make it so they don't have the opportunity to rent a position to him. I do not support this.
Okay. Any other comments?
Well, yeah, I guess just, I understand Mr. Taylor's concerns. But this isn't an unusual type of relationship with private entities. I think we can look to different models in different communities as part of their economic development plans. And certainly, I think there's other, you know, we could tailor a contract or relationship to meet the city's needs, you know, so that it's competitive, I guess. Maybe, maybe we open it up for bid, you know? But the cities, with what's been proposed, the city's not actually investing any money into any infrastructure that's all going to be privately installed.
Do we have any more information on the power, seasonal power hookup?
No, I'm sorry, we did not get back to, get to flood electric to find that up, find that question, answer that question. Mr. Zimmerman?
Do we know, does Mr. Blackburn have a business license in the city?
I do not know.
Just kind of curious.
We will find out.
Okay. Thank you.
So I'm looking for a little direction here. Is everyone, Mr. Hiller said he's not satisfied with the amount proposed. Is that a drawback for anyone else?
No.
Do you have the?
I do not support this.
I'd kind of like to see what, if this is a fair rent amount.
I agree, though, we're not putting anything into it. Like, we're not, like a landlord owns property and, yeah, just a piece of land.
And there's nothing there now, and so actually, having private development improve it, that is economic development, and it would become less blighted. I mean, not that the park is blighted, but that's just a blank space. And as I mentioned at our last meeting, when the Riverfront Park plan was initially developed, that area was specifically retained for these types of businesses to come. It was probably.
Have we come to a formal agreement with the vendor's market yet?
Farmer's market, no.
The farmer's market?
I have not heard anything else from them. I don't know if they're still interested or not.
Okay, just didn't know if they were still wanting one section or the other or not. Okay, there was going to be a conflict.
Other than looking at other pieces of property or requesting that other landlords who have that kind of property come forward, I'm not sure how to resolve the conflict, the competition. Question? Yes.
I agree, he's a logical fit for, you know, down at the river. I'm wondering if with his shop being there, will it conflict with any other things we have kind of planned for Riverfront Park? I know we've got some issues with the trees, not the tree stuff.
I do have the, a section of the DNRC grant, which we should know by March whether or not we get, receive that, to have an arborist, look at the trees, the soil, the water, all of that, and develop a management plan. But at this point, I don't expect to be able to do a lot of that work this summer, and I don't know what the recommendations are going to be. As long as we don't really do, he's not requesting that we do anything back there. He would just like to have, and it is a seasonal thing. I said I would only do it for one season to see if, how it goes and how it would work. We won't do a long-term plan until we know more information. But he's also aware that the farmer's market may be there, the Blues Festival is there, that weddings and things like that could interfere or could be there as, as a conflict with this piece of land if it's a very large event, and he is willing to take that.
Okay, true.
Take that.
This is not dissimilar to the vendor at the Falls County Park. They have, you know, there's a business located there. It's exact same.
Do they put out bids for someone, or do they just?
I think that was a multi-year contract, as initially written, but not 100%.
Ian, did you have any comments?
Yeah, I don't, I'm in agreement with Mr. Taylor. I don't believe that the city should be in the business of competing with private, with private. private landlords. So I would agree with Mr. Taylor.
Okay. All right. Does the council have any other comments? And open it to public comments. So public, are there any public comments on this request from Mr. Blackburn to have a fly shop in the, on Riverfront Park? Okay.
John Beebe, 7049. Thanks for the votes. There's many issues with this. You had mentioned the economic development plan. It's not unusual for governments to subsidize business to promote growth, and federal government does it all the time. It's called corporate welfare. I do have a couple of suggestions that you may or may not want to consider. I support economic development. Libby has stagnated in the last 30 years. It's true. I would suggest approval on a seasonal basis in, in the interim with maybe some discussion on developing a policy towards this to promote equality in it and get some public input on that policy. Let's get the people involved, you know, maybe they'll come up with some good ideas. I do also recognize the separation of government and business. It doesn't tend to work out. It, it hasn't in the past. Not to say that you couldn't develop a, a policy and a plan to promote business within the city limits. Whatever keeps Dave out of my fishing hole would be good, but no, we need to promote economic development with, with due recognition for the constitutional conundrum. I don't believe that, you know, as far as we, the people, of the people, by the people, for the people is, you're given in those constitutional restraints, they're promoting business. On the other hand, I can see the other side, that it's an empty lot sitting there now. Maybe we should just get something out of it. So, thank you, and you guys are in tough chairs.
Any other public comments, record, Mr. Orr.
So I think I'm understanding, it says that two places are on the attached map, but there is no attached map. But one is at Riverfront Park and one is at the bottom of the viaduct. Is that what I'm understanding?
Yes.
Yeah, it's a good question.
Although the council actually ruled out the, using the space by the Legion Field.
With the right, so there's.
So we're only talking about Riverfront Park.
Only talking about Riverfront Park, okay. Well then, the only other thing I would mention is that when Councilman Smith mentioned the concession at the Falls, you know, that concession at the Falls, there are a lot of people in town who are convinced that it's way under-valued, that people aren't making, you know, county isn't making much money off of that. There was a legal, legal proceeding this past year concerning that concession, and in the process of that legal wrangling, it came out that the former commissioner owns that concession. No one will talk about when that commissioner bought that county concession, that county commissioner, but I would like to see you guys put whatever deal you might make in writing and maybe take a lesson from now President Trump, who, when leader of another nation, came to him and said, you know, we, we might put $150 billion into your economy. The president said, make it 300. You're going to get money out of it? Get some real money.
Any other public comments on the, the request for use of property at Riverfront Park? Any other requests or any other comments? Any other comments? Okay, move on to the six-month budget review. Ms. Monigle?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council. I know, doesn't it seem like it? Okay. Well, I'm going to start off with the, I'm going to start off actually with the revenue side of it. Right now, we've budgeted, we're at six months in, it's about 50% where we should be. And the same goes for, as closely as we could do it, for revenue coming in. There are, we're actually right on track for everything that we've been bringing in. A few unforeseen, like you never know how the, like, the cemetery and those type of places are going to go, so we just kind of have to do kind of an average of what we usually bring in. The one thing that I did know that we did not budget correctly, because we did not know, is going to be the cannabis money coming in. The first check that we were able to budget off of was $4,000. And when that one come in, we didn't know, because it's paid quarterly, we didn't know what it would be, so we just kind of took that times a four, and this is only after two quarters. I've just received another county check for $11,000 that doesn't show on this budget. So there's, that was, yes, there's money in cannabis. But, so anyway, that was one of the biggest surprises with this. But all of our revenue is actually right on where it should be right now. If I had any more notes.
The street openings are helping us with the street opening.
And those, yes, those have been going up too, the street openings.
We're actually collecting them rather than just letting people open our street and walk away.
Yeah, and there was a, for a time there that was, well, wasn't being handled. And I know now with, with Justin Williams here and some, and with Sam and everybody, they've made sure that, you know, you guys get out there and you guys open up these streets. You guys need to be, be paying for them and getting them sealed up too. So, is there any questions on the revenue? And we'll go on over to expenditures, and it's the same, it's about 50% right now. And, you know, going over this budget, we just had our budget meeting here about a week ago, going over everything, and all the departments are doing absolutely wonderful, staying within budget, everything is right around 50%. There's just a few little areas that we're just a hair over, but they're all actually right in where we should be. A few of the items, like the miscellaneous, that actually is a little higher, but that is our insurance that we pay, and that's, majority of that is for the full year. I didn't have a whole lot that I could, that really popped out at me on this one. So I just want to tell you, everybody's doing a wonderful job, I think, and just going to give you the highlights.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do anyone have any comments?
Madam Mayor, if I could, is, one of the things that's really helping us right now is the lack of snow with the streets. True, we're not paying overtime. We have been putting all these extra costs out there, and for the heating, we haven't had cold snaps, so this is really looking well. And the good thing is, we're hoping to have extra funding to transport into the capital improvements plan at the end of the year, so we can look at doing some larger projects in the future.
Thank you. Any public comments on the budget? There are copies of it available over off the table, and it did go out as part of the materials with the agenda, for those who are on the mailing list, emailing list. And if you're not on that list, just see Leann and give her your email so you can get on that list. So is there any public comments regarding the budget at the six-month point? Any public comments? Okay, we'll move on then to approve all claims received to date.
Make a motion to approve all claims received to date?
Everybody get to see the claims? I was trying to figure out where they are. Are they back here? Okay, everyone get to see them, look at them? Okay. And so, no questions? Any public comments on the claims? Any public comments? The public is welcome to look at them. They're available on Monday afternoons, just by coming into the building and talking to one of the front desk or Leann and, or Sam, and they, they can show you the claims. They're usually sitting on the table for council people, so you are welcome to look at them. But seeing no public comments on the claims? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries, claims are approved. That brings us to the business license application received to date. One is Cabinet Mountain Mechanical, DC Windows and Doors, Goat Cleaning Service, Mountain Valley Publishing LLC, Nomad Expression, and Speedy Handyman Services.
Make a motion to approve all business license applications received to date?
Second.
Okay, any questions on any of these applications? Comments? Any public comments on these applications? Any public comments on these business applications? Any public comments? Then all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, those business license applications are approved. That brings us to the unfinished business of discussion of the Libby Development Fund policy and application process. I know that Newsburger, Councilwoman Berger, has wanted to talk about a grant writer, and I did put together, I used some samples and put together an application. I think everybody got it at their place, and it did not go out on email, so you don't have a copy of that, but it is a draft, even though it does not say that. And it's a, it's basically based off of a couple of other places that I looked for, and it's a request for qualifications for grant writing services. And just looking to develop a list of qualified grant consultants assisting in securing funds through grant opportunities, and it kind of lists the scope of the services and the qualifications and proposal formats and submission requirements. So, does anybody have any comments on it? Is this the direction you want to go?
Well, I will continue to say that I think we're cutting off our noses by the face. I think we're growing and we have a lot going on in this community, and we need someone who's really going to be able to cultivate relationships and not just fill out an application. Having, having somebody with community development skills so that they can pick up the phone and they always know, oh, you're with Libby, and let me, let me see what I can do for you. I mean, those relationships are critical to community and economic development across the state. So I will continue to advocate for that. I think we can do that, particularly if it's a part-time basis. We have work to keep a part-time person busy, and that's a good way to integrate.
Okay. Gail, do you have?
I concur with that.
I know that there's no dollar amount attached to this. At this point, we do have to, to find out exactly what that base rate would be for someone booking to write some of these grants. And some of those grants are very small, and they, while they would be benefit to the city, they don't provide any income to the grant writer, so we would have to subsidize that.
I think it would be a good use for the Community Development Fund to fund this, seed money. I agree that community development skills would definitely be something we need in this position. As you had that grant on your table that required some public meetings and different things like that, and of course, we didn't have the manpower to do it, so we let that one pass. I think with this position, it can really be an asset to the, to the city. I made a list of some other ideas along with the grant writer, as you guys didn't bring no ideas. So, I, I really like the grant writer. I think it can accomplish a few of these ideas as well, such as sidewalks, Christmas. We've talked about Christmas a little bit. We really kind of need to do something there, Riverfront Park. Downtown Mineral, it's got some, some special needs going on there. I think we can, can maybe do some work down there. I viewed a map of the longer trail that would connect our trails and our sidewalks, not only to the skate park, but they'd be, you know, all connected where you could get to Riverfront Park. I think that's a good idea, and the skate park. So I think just having a discussion of stuff, and I'm not saying spend all this money, oh my God, let's get rid of it, but I'm saying let's put some of it to use. We definitely should hang on to some for grant matching or other things. But it's Community Development Fund, and I think we need to put it to work in our community.
I'm going to make the comment that I, I have talked to Gail about not doing any work in Riverfront Park until we get that master plan, but we might, we might need implementation money. I've talked to the DEQ under their, oh, operation maintenance, they're, they can offer some help in replacing some of the trees, soils, and so, but they can't do irrigation systems, and so there are things, other things they cannot do. Sam and I also talked to the resource damage people when they were here. They don't like sidewalks, even on that longer trail connector, they, they don't like sidewalks. They were optimistic about being able to help with Riverfront Park, but their grant cycle is so far out that it might not be upfront helpful to start with. I also talked to Gus Byram today. They are almost ready with the scope of work for the $25,000 downtown technical assistant grant, which will be able to help us do some public meetings and pull that together for an update of what we want to get down there. And then we've been needing, again, some implementation money for that.
And I think a grant writer can also, you know, they're not in favor of doing sidewalks, but our grant writer can be able to look at the parks and look at where the other government grants are out there and apply for those.
Right, and then we can use our funds as matching funds for some.
I think we can do several things with this money other than just city money.
Any other city council comments? Before we move on?
So do you have a number in mind of how much money you're wanting to use out of the economic, or the community development?
I think it would really depend on what we decide that we want to look at, the grant writer, depending on what the pay scale is on that, I would say seed money for maybe a year. We'd see where that goes, take it year by year, and just kind of look at it. Part-time grant writer, I mean, depending on your entry, if you do entry level, it just, it depends on who you get and what the pay scale is going to be on that.
Any other public, council comments? Direction? Okay, any public comments on the discussion over the Community Development Fund? Any public comments? Public comments? Then we will move on to the unfinished, the general comments from the council. And at this particular moment, I just did my two comments regarding the grant funding that's out there, that we're looking at. So does any, council have any comments? Any items you want to see or discuss?
I will note to the ordinance committee that I had forgotten that we said we reconsider the chief's proposal.
Correct.
So I'll call me.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments from the council?
I just want to make one quick comment. If anybody's interested in the water plant or the sewer plant investment fees, it's all there in. there in the revenue side of the budget, so they can see that and know where we're sitting.
Okay, any other council comments? Then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, meeting is adjourned.